Hey, there he is.
I'll make sure of it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I just was curious.
You getting ready for winter?
All right.
Growing a little bit longer.
All right.
Yeah.
I hadn't seen you for a while.
It's been a while.
Yeah. I was gonna grow mine, but I didn't figure red and gray and go.
The first names, I can't remember your name. First name.
Oh, I missed an opportunity there to feed on.
Pete, Brian.
Jason.
Jason.
Kyle Parks.
Kyle.
Seth Tucker.
Seth Tucker.
Bob Johnson. I'm your attorney that I don't need. I don't think we need the seventh to call in unless.
I'll just let him know to wash them.
Yeah.
Just in case you didn't have a quorum, I can.
So when it gets five, we'll start, I'll start the meeting and then kinda turn it over to you guys. All right, it's five o'clock, let's go ahead and start the planning commission meeting. Notice is given, everybody stand. Pledge allegiance. Do you wanna leave us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this is the planning commission meeting that was established by the Bourbon County Commissioners. Resolution thirty dash twenty-five, each of you have that. The planning commission members, I just ask you all to introduce yourselves since we're live on TV. You wanna start?
Pete Owenby.
Brian Ashworth.
Jason Yant.
Bo Casper.
Seth Tucker.
Kyle Parks.
I'm Bob Johnson, I'm the county counselor. My role in this is to get you started and let you do what you need to do. The first. Well, first of all, this is an open meeting, it's subject to coma. I'm gonna get all your emails and send you some information about coma. I think you probably know, some of you know a lot about it probably. That just means that you can't meet outside the meetings and talk about business. You have to come to the meeting to do that. We have to have a quorum, there's seven of you, we have one missing tonight. So we have a quorum. You have to have four. The first out order of business I would suggest is that you all nominate and elect a chairman. Then you nominate and elect the vice chairman. And then you nominate and elect a secretary. Secretary is supposed to take notes, but since the meetings are recorded, you can go back and watch it or take notes. The minutes of the meeting are supposed to summarize what happens, it's not a, it's not a verbatim or per word type of deal, so. Since this is your first meeting, I would suggest that you nominate and appoint a chairman, vice chair, and a secretary. Yes, sir.
I nominate Brian Ashworth for chairman.
It's been moved and seconded, Brian Ashworth's the chairman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. I'll see you later, it's all yours. So. You can, you can text me, I think you need a vice chairman and a secretary.
All right, vice, anybody wanna recommend a vice chairman?
Bo Casper.
Second.
I didn't say Kyle, he did punch.
Now, he's the guy that's gone, we can give him the secretary job.
Millborn? Be careful what you say.
No.
So you have a motion and a second, so you.
So all, all in favor?
You have to ask for discussion.
Oh, discussion?
No discussion, then you can ask for a vote.
Okay, all in favor of Bo?
So we have a chairman and a vice chair, now I think you need a secretary. Does anybody wanna be secretary? One, two, three, not me. I mean, it's pretty important because that's, you prepare the minutes of the meeting and it's a record of what happened. It's not as important maybe as it used to be, cause you also have a video archive, I guess, but it is pretty important, so. I mean, somebody has to do that.
I can barely write my name.
Who's good at technology? Somebody can download an app.
You can probably put it on AI, it'd probably.
Stick the video in, yeah.
Definitely not me.
I'll move Seth Tucker.
I'll second. Discussion?
I think he'd be good.
Okay.
All in favor of Seth Tucker?
Secretary?
Okay, so, I'm not on the board, but just so you guys get an idea. You have a chairman, a vice chair, secretary. Secretary is supposed to prepare the minutes. The resolution says that you shall convene for your first meeting and then you shall meet at least four times a year. You can also convene for special meetings, so I think probably with the tenor over here right now, your main thing today is, I would say probably, setting up your next meeting where people can have notice that you're taking up the issue and give kind of a public hearing or have to give people an opportunity to tell you what they like, what they don't like. I did provide all of you a copy of what the zoning advisory committee had put together. There are lots of counties around here that have zoning in place and rules and regulations. You also have a lot of local people that have opinions on what they should be, and that's why you guys are all on this board. At some point down the road, you'll make a recommendation to the board of county commissioners on what they should adopt. You're an advisory board, although you're a planning commission, you vote. Generally, the county commission follows what boards do. So whatever you put together, you should really think a lot about and listen to your constituents or people that contact you. And that's why, you know, I think having at least one or two public hearings between now and probably Christmas, you know, with the holidays, it's a little tough. You guys need to figure out what's a good time, what's a good day. And then, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get all your emails so I can send you some stuff, but just remember, under coma, you really shouldn't talk to each other outside of this area about zoning. If you wanna talk about football or Fort Scott basketball, that's fine. You're just not supposed to talk about business. So just be cognitive of that, there's people in the community that'll be cognitive of that as well. So. Yeah, that's kinda where you're at, I would suggest probably that some of you are on this advisory committee and you all can talk about it tonight. There is no agenda tonight. Probably your next meeting, you'll have an agenda of public comments on what, what they wanna see or hear or read about what zoning's gonna look like. You know, we've had some hot potato issues, we've got this Bitcoin issue with the noise, you know, you always have solar, you always have wind, you have data centers, you have lots of new stuff. You got ag use, everything's pretty much ag use out in the county unless you do something different, you get a conditional use permit. I can gather some other counties' regulations that they have in place and email them to you to let you look at them. I'm not gonna tell you what you should do and what you shouldn't do. If you have a question whether something's legal, I can assist you on that. But if you call me up and say, should we allow widgets to be made here? It's up to you guys, you know. As long as it's legal or not legal, it's up to me. And sometimes that's gray. Sometimes it's public perception, sometimes it's counties, what you want, what you don't want, so. You guys are, were all selected by the three commissioners to be neutral, be fair, be progressive, protect the county. And I think the commissioners ones here. I think they each appointed you all because they believed that you'd be good in this, this role. So I, I think that says something about all your character, then at least what the three commissioners thought of your ability to be neutral and play this role. The statutes generally that deal with this, I can email these to you too, starts at KSA twelve dash seven forty-four, it kinda goes downhill from there. Whatever you discuss tonight, you, the main thing you probably need to do is just set your next meeting when it's convenient for you all and so it can be publicized, so you can have people come and tell you what, what they like or dislike. The zoning advisory board, or zoning advisory committee recommendations, I think are pretty public, so. And now that you have them on the table, they are public, if they weren't already, I think they were. You all have any questions for me? I have to be humble at six, so I can't stay too long. I'm from Allen County, I'll get all of you my cellphone, the commissioners, everybody that works for county has my cellphone. Literally twenty-four seven, I'm available. Right, Micah?
Yes.
You know, I'll answer any question I can, email, I'm over here in court, I can talk to you if you guys have something come up, but I think if you read the statutes, and I think you guys already know this, your main role is to hear people's opinions and then try to put it in a plan that you think fits your population, what people want, so. You guys have any questions with me?
Is there a, you said a minimum of four times. Is there, if we set a meeting schedule, how closely do we need to follow, like if there's nothing to discuss, or like if we say we'll meet?
I think that's by state statute. You have to meet four times a year. Special meetings may be called by the chairperson on not less than three days' notice. You can have a meeting every week if you want, you just have to meet four times a year. So after you give your recommendation, let's say, let's say January tenth, say, hey, here's our recommendation on what you should do for zoning. Then it, then it's up to the county, and I'm sure people will come and talk to them about it. After that, you really won't have much to do until somebody wants to do something in the county that is dealing with what the commissioners adopt. It's usually could, it's usually a conditional use permit. I mean, most counties, what you see is a cellphone company wants to put a tower up north of Uniontown and they have to get a conditional use permit, or, wind farm, you know, the hot potato issues, you already know, but there are some things that come up that you may not think of. I mean, most people don't care if they have a cellphone tower, cause landowners are getting paid and it doesn't make any noise. So, you know, it's usually the case, maybe not over here. That's, that's how I see your role. If you all see that role different, that's fine, I'm, I'm just a lawyer that put it together, you guys can kinda do what you wanna do. You know, I think, somebody said, are you, were you on the city? Somebody was on the city that dealt with zoning or codes?
I wasn't, I wasn't rolling park.
Oh, okay. So there's some background there. If you guys don't have any questions, I'm probably gonna get out of here. Chairman, you, we don't have an agenda, you can ask for public comments if you'd like. You know, just remember, it won't be a problem tonight. You know, if you wanna speak, you need to raise your hand and be addressed by the chairman. Do you have the ability to recognize him or not? I would suggest you probably recognize him. Unless Micah stands up, I wouldn't talk to her, but. When you're ready to leave, somebody has to make a motion to adjourn. Motions have to be seconded, you have to have discussion, then you vote. You have to take a vote, I'm guessing your votes will probably be mostly unanimous, and that's kinda what you need to, right now, Mr. Secretary?
Okay. I have a quick question, as of now, there's really no noise ordinance, nor a way to enforce it at their work.
Depends if it's criminal or not. I mean, I know you're talking about the Bitcoin deal, there is an investigation on that through the sheriff's office, they met with him Tuesday, I just talked to the sheriff at five, four fifty-five. There is no noise ordinance in place. Generally, a noise resolution or ordinance might not be part of a zoning package, that might be separate. Do you really? I mean, it could be part of it, I'm not trying to dissuade, dissuade you, but that would generally, I think, probably be different than regulations of what can go anywhere, how it can, you know, where it can be. It could include noise, and if you guys wanna tackle that, I'm sure the commissioners would be just happy if you guys do that, so. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
I have a question on that, that is, is that site considered an industrial site?
As I understand it, Bourbon County's not zoned, so it's probably just considered ag.
So.
Now, I'm speaking generally, I'm not sure, that's my understanding.
All right, yeah, I'm sure it's zoned to ag.
Oh, there's no zone.
There is no zone.
Well, let me know.
Everything, everything outside.
Is zoned ag?
It would be zoned to ag, but it would be probably commercial or industrial if it were, if it were zoned and that usage would be considered.
There, there's been, there's been suggestions, I'm sure you're gonna hear this, that everything in the county should be ag, and if they wanna do something other than ag, they should apply for a conditional use permit, have a hearing, then you guys decide if that should be allowed. That was just Monday night, I think, I don't know if he's here, Emerson, Mr. Emerson?
I'm sorry, we were signing the paper.
Yeah, yeah, he was, he was here, that's kinda what he. A lot of counties do that, so, I mean, and I, I told Mr. Emerson Monday, you know, the commissioners can't just do what he wants to do, it has to come through this process, then you have to propose it to the commission and the commission has to adopt it. I, I told him after the meeting that, you know, that's why the commission can't just unilaterally say, yeah, we're gonna do this. There has to be this process by statute, if you read those statutes, KSA twelve seven forty-four and everything after that, that's what it commonplace, so. I'll figure out a way to get all your emails and send just some information. You'll have my cellphone and email, my parallel, so. I wish you well, I'll be happy to help. I'll come to your meetings if you need me to, if it's just gonna be a discussion of people's concerns and what they want or don't want, I probably won't be here. But if there comes a time where you want some legal interpretation, I'll be more than happy to be here.
We'll see, there'll be times where we need you, you can.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, I'll, I'll come whenever I'm needed. Okay? Any other questions? I, I don't mean to run, but I do have a prior deal at six. So I'll be able to speak on the way home. It's nice to meet y'all.
Yep.
Good to meet you.
Just remember, when your meetings, I, I would set your next meeting so it would be publicized. Tell people, you, you expect people to come and tell you their thoughts. If you guys wanna talk about what's already been kinda recommended, you're free to do that. I don't think you have any reason to go into executive session about anything, so. Just when you're done, you have to make a motion to adjourn. Okay? See y'all.
Thank you.
See y'all.
I, I have one recommendation on a lot of this stuff. It's really, it's really hard to see what's going on, what's, what's happening, just like this Bitcoin deal. I drove up there last night. I was sit there for about thirty, forty minutes. I think everybody ought to do that.
Where is it at exactly?
Uh, Sixty-Fifth and Willow Road, you head back east on Willow Road, about a half mile, you won't miss it.
Yeah.
If you got a, if you got a Zini, it's half a mile, half a mile north and half a mile east of Zini.
I, I, and every, everything we're gonna tackle, I think we oughta, we oughta go stand next to a windmill, we oughta go stand next to solar panels, we oughta go stand next to a data center, cell tower, that's my opinion.
I, I agree with that.
I don't think it's a bad one at all, I mean, be introduced to all of it and then you know what we're.
That way you know what you're dealing with.
What we're listening to, or however.
So currently, the county has no zoning laws?
No.
Or building laws, other than septic tanks, correct? Is it right, Bo?
Yeah, as far as that, yeah, that's, and that isn't even, I don't even think that's a county deal, that's like a, a state.
That's a state.
Yes.
So. Do we have a moratorium on, on, on some stuff until, I thought we had a moratorium put in to hold us? Because they knew this was kinda.
I don't know.
They do on solar, and I think they're working on one.
The cap, the commissioners got something put in on solar?
I haven't. I'm pretty confident that they did, and I think that they're working on one for the sound, but.
That team is not, not against. Before we get sidetracked, we wanna set a day that, like, just, we'll figure out how often to meet, but a day that works for everybody to meet and a time, a rough timeframe.
Wednesday next week at five o'clock? Is that too soon? Is that?
Wednesday's not gonna work for you? No, Wednesday's worked, Thursdays can work for me, but a little bit after five is normally the ideal, but like.
Five thirty?
Five thirty would be.
Yeah.
Wednesdays at five thirty?
Yeah.
Wednesdays at five thirty?
I'm good on Wednesdays.
Okay. So when we have a meeting, we'll try and, we'll try and keep it. Is there anything going on in here Wednesdays at five thirty?
I thought I'm aware of.
Okay. And then, I, I think it'd be good to at least set a timeframe so that we're not like here all hours, so.
Hour and a half?
I think if we, I would, I would, if, if it's possible, I think, so we don't get burnt out, I would say an hour and a half max, we could try to shoot, unless like we have a lot of public comments or whatever, I think we can try and shoot for an hour. We'll have an agenda to try and work through, and if we, I mean, but shoot for an hour and a half max would be my recommendation. I know that stuff gets sidetracked, but.
I know, just watching the commissioners' meetings, I feel sorry for them guys, show up at five thirty and leave at ten.
Not be doing it.
Yeah, I, I would.
All right, so we'll shoot for an hour, try and hold it to an hour and a half max. Obviously, if there's extenuating circumstances or whatever. All right. Do we need a vote on that?
I'll move, I'll move we hold the meetings to an hour, hour and a half max.
Unless there's an extenuating circumstance.
Yeah, unless we need to leave over.
All right, and.
A second.
All in favor?
Discussion?
Aye. Oh, oh, sorry, we need a discussion. Anybody wanna discuss? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. And then, do we need a vote on Wednesdays? So. How mu, I mean, do we need to set dates? Like, we have Thanksgiving coming up in, you know, three weeks, do we wanna say, let's meet this week, this week, this week, and then, I mean, do we wanna look at a calendar and, and set that out, like, meetings for the next? Do we, yeah, do we, I, like, well, you know, I think maybe to ramp up, like, a meeting, we could meet next week. The following, is the following, we have two more weeks until Thanksgiving, three more weeks.
Three more weeks, I think.
So maybe we can meet, maybe we meet a couple, couple times to kinda get everybody going, but I don't think we, at least from how the, the zoning advisory board or whatever it was called, weekly meetings, ten, I think we're a lot to try and prepare for the next one and get everything through it. It, it, yeah, I mean, I don't disagree with that, but how quickly? I mean, what's our expectation on how quickly we think we can, I mean, it's kinda cart before the horse. The whole point is that we're gonna put together a comprehensive plan for zoning in the county, that's our job. Per state statute, the planning commission may adopt and amend a comprehensive plan by whole or single resolution. So basically, we're, we're gonna try to put the comprehensive plan together, so what's our target date for that? You know, I don't know that we're gonna know until we actually get into the meetings and how long it's gonna take.
That's what I was gonna say, what's realistic?
Oh, yeah, that's a good question, but that's gonna drive how often we need to meet, and how, how much we get done and. I didn't volunteer for this originally, I was on the, the advisory board and I didn't, cause I know this was gonna be a ton of work, because to do it right, I think that we, there's a lot of due diligence that needs to happen for us to be able to, I mean, there's been issues that we didn't even know about, when we had our advisory board, like the, the bit mine coining, we didn't even think about that, we didn't know about it, so. It's, how do we do this right so that we can protect the county and protect property rights a, at the same time, and it's just, and we have to zone the county, you know, we have to say, this area is, this is zoned, this area is, you know, we need to look at maps, it's, I don't know, it's gonna be a lot of time, I think. It's up, it's up to everybody on what we meet, I wouldn't mind meeting the first three weeks up to Thanksgiving, and then we can set a schedule after that. That way, we can get a good base and see the pace and see where we're at, that's my opinion.
That's not a bad idea.
I agree.
So you wanna meet the next two Wednesdays? Is that basically?
Next Wednesday, and then. We'll, we'll set the next two Wednesdays, and then we can go from there after that, I think that's probably a good place to start, set the next two meetings. So that'd be the fifth and the twelfth? Oh, yeah.
A motion.
Okay. Motion to set meetings on the fifth and the twelfth. All in favor? Discussion? Oh, sorry.
Discussion need every time for Bill.
Thank you. No? No discussion, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Unanimous.
Okay. What else I need? Do we want, I mean, I, we put this together, so I'm familiar with, with the recommendations that were made during the advisory committee. Does anybody have questions about, about it, or does everybody kind of know what was recommended?
Yeah, we've.
We've got three zones.
I've been following a little bit, I've been anyway, so, I mean, it's pretty, I mean, so far with everything, it's pretty self-explanatory, I mean, I didn't see anything that caught my eye right off, right off hand.
Yeah, I mean, we, it was, I think, a pretty, we just gathered recommendations on what, what I think now we as a group should look into.
I have a question, real quick. Explain to me the difference between commercial and industrial.
So commercial would be like a store?
Okay.
For, and then.
Selling something, buying something, right?
Industrial would be.
Building something.
Yeah, or, like, a power plant would be industrial.
Timken, that's longer there.
Yeah, extrusions would be, you know, things like that would be industrial.
So is the Bitcoin mining industrial? You got a, you got a monster generator sitting there running?
I, I think that we could probably look at, do some research on that and see what other places are, are defining that as. I think it's up to us to define that, if we put that into, into the zoning at all. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of, like, resource and history out there on what kinda falls in what category. I would argue, like, a data center would be an industrial building, so, and I would think that.
So what makes a data center an industrial building?
I mean, a warehouse would be industrial, right, so I think that that's. I'd have to like look at. Like, we could go and look, there, I, building, there's a ton of, I mean, the world is all zoned, and so it's easy, I think it's, that is a relatively easy thing to go look and find precedent, okay, what falls in what category, and I'm sure there's legal things revolving, I don't know enough about it, but in that way specifically.
Well, and that gives us a week to look into that stuff, too, I mean, come next week, you know, when we meet, we can at least kinda follow up and have. I mean, come next week, you know, when we meet, we can at least kinda follow up and have, be able to bounce ideas off at least from each of those items of where they lie.
Yeah, and I think, like, some of that stuff, to me, at least, is getting into the weeds that we'll, we need to get into. But I think, kinda going back to what you, I think we probably need to, uh, think about it over the next week or so and come with some ideas and, and like, uh, what, what we're trying to achieve, why we're trying to achieve it. We, I mean, we did some of that research, we obviously will have feedback from, from the public on it, but I think that is kind of, we should come up with some ideas about that so we can, like, step, take a step back and when we look at it, we're like, is this achieving that? And then, kind of, as we talk about things, we can go back and say, yeah, that's good, but that's overre, that is probably overreaching, 'cause it's, affects this, and we can kinda go just keep, keep us guided in the right direction. If that makes sense. And, you know, like, we made recommendations in here that kinda did that, and so maybe we can all read this and, and say, yeah, no, we agree with that, we don't agree with that, we don't, like, you know, I think one of the things we wanted, we were trying to be pretty cognizant of in, during the advisory committee, was the idea to protect people's property rights without over-infringing, um, but, but also, like, not, we wanna be pro-business and pro-growth for sure in this community. But how do you balance that with, with being a good neighbor and all the rest? So, um, yeah, that's, I think that'd be a good, like, thing to try and sort out as we move forward.
I agree with that.
When we were on the, the advisory committee, we didn't step in the weeds and we knew that once this was gonna be a step in the weeds.
Certainly, yeah, no, we're gonna have to, like, dig in for sure.
Yeah.
I mean, what I would like to see is, I think we do need to get surrounding counties and their, and their resolutions. And I think that we need to go through those piece by piece and say, I like this, I don't like this, I think we should include this, I don't think we should include this. And get a rough draft together of what we think that we, and then, I mean, that's gonna be a process, it's gonna take weeks. But I think that we need to do that, because it's, it's a solved solution to a certain extent, because, I mean, we're not zoned, but uh, I can't remember what, twenty of the counties in, in south and east of I-35, twenty-something are zoned and six aren't. So we, we have lots of data from, and lots of, you know, prior solved solutions from other counties, and I think taking bits and pieces and making it in our own, I think that's, to me, a good, a good start, because it gets us into the weeds on the stuff, and then we can make decisions, and then we could, we could run it by, um, Bob and, and make sure that this is legal, this isn't legal, and, and, I mean, that seems logical and reasonable to me as far as a, a way to, to get started. I mean, I would love to have, I wish we had copies of that state statute so we could I think that it was important that before our next meeting, that we do read through some of the state statutes, because it lists specifically what our responsibilities are as a planning commission. So essentially, we're here to create a comprehensive plan that we'll then submit to, um, the county commissioners. They'll either approve it or send it back to us and say, you know, we think you need to change this, we think you need to change that, and then we can, we'll meet, obviously, and make changes and resubmit. And, and that's generally how the process is gonna be until we actually have a comprehensive plan, um, for zoning that, that is, that is approved by the county. Um, and then, after we get that together, all we'll have to do is make, you know, we'll, we have to meet four times a year and make adjustments to that accord. So, um, I think we need to get with him and get, get copies of, I don't know what, what counties we wanna look at. Lynn County is pretty, they have a lot, uh, from, from what I've, from what we saw on the advisory committee, they have a, they have a lot of, they're very, um, coded in their stuff, so they do, they have a lot of restrictions.
They have building codes.
They have, they have a lot of more building code type stuff. On the other side of that coin, the Beck County, they were wide open, and, and they said basically, everything is allowed except for solar and, and wind without a, a special use permit. But that, what that doesn't do is daylight any future issues
Right.
that we can't see, like, you know, we may not think of these Dana Minor thing, and if you do something like a little bit, you don't have any protection against that. It's, you have to be reactive instead of proactive versus if you have, this is ag, and if you're not gonna use it within ag, you need a special, special use case, then it's, it's gonna daylight any of those issues that come up. But again, we wanna do that with a fine line as not to, not to obstruct people's personal property rights and their ability to monetize their property that they own, that they paid for. So it, it's, we have a tough job.
I agree.
We have a tough, tough job.
Yeah, and I think during, I mean, during that discussion, one of the things that we definitely don't wanna do is zone, or to, to code, codify the county.
Yeah, we want
Too deep that is possible.
See, the problem with codes is then somebody's gonna have to enforce them.
Right.
And, you know, not, not put somebody else on the payroll, and I'm not, you know.
Uh, and, and that's a completely separate issue. The, the state does allow for there to be a, um, a zoning, a county employee that, that deals with the day-to-day zoning. 'Cause somebody has to deal with the applications and all those things, and there are specific statutes within, uh, the Kansas State statutes that allow for a budget for us, for, um, for some, for us to hire somebody within the county. That would have to be approved through commissioners, obviously, and, and, and I don't think it's going to in the current state of our, our finances, but that's something that we wanna keep an open mind to in the future. If, if it's too much, I mean, our, if we don't, then we're gonna have to, I don't know if it's, I, we need to look at the state statutes. Is it us that has to address all the applications for special use permits, or is it the county commissioners? Ultimately, we need to go through the state statutes and see what, where that's all defined and
I think it's both.
Have a good idea of what we're gonna do.
I can tell you how it, how it operated in Roland Park, and it's urban, totally, it's different, but we, so, we had, I was brought on as we were starting to, you guys know this. But I was brought on as we were starting to adjust the zoning and, and updating some codes and things there. And they had an outside, they had hired an architect and landscape firm to, to kinda guide that, they did a whole comprehensive, I was, it was really, as somebody who kinda likes the data, it was really nice to see, like, we have this many single-family homes, you have this many, and they're, you know, your, your lot sizes are this size, you know, and you kinda, it gave you some digestible information on how to, to make decisions. And they would make recommendations and, hey, here's what we're seeing, we, this is, this is an issue that was brought up, they, they did polling and everything, this is an issue that was brought up by these people. This is how we've seen other places address it, but, you know, and then, and then we would take it and be like, yeah, no, we like that, we don't like that. But in those meetings, there was the, we had a code official, so he was always there to provide insight on things. We had the, somebody from the county or the city commission was normally there and either virtually or, or there in person. And then it was like the city clerk, I think the city clerk kinda ran the meeting and gave us all the, did all the, the administrative parts. So to your, to your question, that was kinda how they operated. They, the, the planning or the, the building inspector and the city clerk, I think is who it was, would present us with, hey, this is what, this is the stuff that's being brought forward. Hey, this guy wants to build this house here, whatever, and we would, we would address that. So it wasn't, the burden of that sort of stuff wasn't on the zoning board, other, the board kinda made the decision.
Well, I think if you're gonna have, if somebody was gonna apply for a special use permit, the way we're gonna set it up, or the way I think we're gonna set it up, I guess, you would have to come into the county clerk or someplace in the courthouse and apply for your special use permit. And you, you, once you apply for that special use permit, it'd be the county clerks or whoever is in charge of it, would be their responsibility to get ahold of the chairman or the, all the members and say, we've got a special use permit application, we need you guys to come in and, and, uh, go over it. Can you, uh, the chairman's gonna set, uh, Tuesday, the twenty-second, at six P.M. As a meeting date, and we should have all the information on it at that point.
Yeah, and that person would come and present their, like, what, present what they, or their, whatever, their architect or builder, whoever would come and present what they wanted to do, and then, yeah, then the board would ask the questions and make a recommendation.
So that's, that's the way I, I seen it happening, and then it'd go, once we made a recommendation or the planning and zoning board made a recommendation, then it would go to the three commissioners, and the three commissioners would also have the opportunity to, to, um, say, whoa, wait a second, you guys are missing this, this, and this, and we wanna send it back to you, and we want answers on this, this, and this, or, yeah, that sounds good, type of deal. That's the way I understand it.
Yeah, that's typically how it would operate, I agree.
So we're not the final say?
We make a recommendation.
Yes.
Right, yeah.
We're not, yeah. Does that make sense?
I'm just looking through the state statutes to see if it's actually laid out. I mean, it does lay out some, like Doug Peele's process, if, if the zoning is approved, um, violations, penalties, I mean, it, it, it lays out a lot of it. Um, I'm just trying to, uh, it's, I wish I had this printed out, um, I should've printed it out, um, the state statutes for, for what our responsibilities are in the zoning. So, um, can we?
But I think in general, there's checks and balances.
Yeah, there, there's checks and balances, absolutely. I just don't know what it's gonna be, what, what is gonna be our responsibility or not. And I know a lot of counties do have a zoning manager that, that manages the day-to-day, that manages the applications, that does, does a lot of that, um, stuff. They don't necessarily approve or disapprove of, you know, or anything, they just do the, the day-to-day management, and I'm not suggesting that we do.
Can you print those state statutes out?
We can, he said he'd email them to us, we can get into, let's, let, we can make that, like
Yeah, we can focus the next, the next meeting when we have had a chance to maybe read through them and bring up questions.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. Any other business we wanna discuss before we open it up for some, have some public comment?
Yeah, I think we definitely need to take public comments today. I think that, yeah, for next week, I think we definitely need to, everybody go over what we suggested in the advisory board, and then some of the state statutes. And maybe we could get with, um, get with Bob and get some of the, um, some of the, um, stuff printed out from the local, the other counties around, so we have stuff to look at next.
He said he could get that for us.
Yes, he said he could get that for us.
I know, I, second or whatever nominate that we open it up to public comments? Is that what, we need to do that?
Do we, I mean, what all do we need to actually vote on?
Do we need to vote, Micah, on whether to open up in public?
Okay.
Open it up for public comments?
Jill Franklin, and we live a half mile from the site. And I know you don't need to hear about what it is or how it's going, my comment is this, first, thank you for being willing to do it. God bless y'all, and if there's anything, anything we can do to help support that, please let us know. My most important comment is, is addressing what you were saying about getting to this as quickly as possible. Because every day that goes without this county being zoned, there's another nice guy, Joe, who's got an idea about doing something around some gas wells or who knows what, who can sneak in here before you do it, so appreciate your sense of urgency, and that's all I got.
So I do, I grew up, uh, a mile from where that site is, so I, I, my grandparents, we lived out there for three years growing up as kids. Um, so essentially, we lived two miles from Zini, so half a mile, half a mile, half a mile, half a mile down the hill, so, um, definitely know that place, you know, driven by it a thousand times. I haven't driven by it since, my uncle's place is still down there, and I, and I haven't been out there all summer, so I do plan on going out there and, and listening to that thing run. And, you know, because I, I think it is important to have actual context before we make any decisions like that.
Sure.
So I think it's a good idea, like with the solar stuff, to maybe take a trip down to, um, Humboldt to stand on the road and see what those solar panels down there look like, that type of scenario. That's, my thought is to have the actual context.
Just wondering, when do you think you guys might wanna do that?
Yeah, that's a good question.
After we go, have to get that approved, when we
We'll all be together.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was gonna say.
Might be an individual type scenario.
That way we don't have to have meeting minutes and all the rest.
Yeah.
Yeah. Jason, you said that deal up north is a half mile north and a half mile back east?
Sixty Fifth and Willow. Yes, so you go to the Zini intersection
Yes.
And you just go about half a mile north, a little bit more, and it'll be the first big gravel road, and you turn right, and it'll be about half a mile down the road. It'll be there, it's right on the, it's right on the gravel road. You'll see some, I think, containers.
No, you'll see, you'll see a thirty-foot wall.
Thirty-foot wall, I guess. I don't think you'll be able to miss it if your windows are down, let the sound.
The Eldred Springs, Missouri, has a ten-acre solar
Do they?
Right in the middle of the, of the residential area.
Do they have a best system, or is it?
Does the one
I don't, I don't know.
I don't think it has a best system. The one over at Chaney, Monarch put that in, and Monarch is using that energy directly, and I think that's all Monarch land. Um, Monarch Portland Company or Seaman Company. That one over there is run by the, by the electric company in Eldred Springs.
They have a, they have a pretty decent-sized one down at, uh, Green Bush in Crawford County.
There's one, right, there's a small
There's a small one by Devon.
There's a small one out there.
Hartland?
Yeah, Hartland's, it's not very big.
I've been to both. That one there's more realistic than that one.
I don't know where the closest big data center is either. I, I don't know where the closest big data center is.
I would have no clue. Um, uh, Prior Oklahoma's the only one I, I knew of.
I'll have to do some research on that. I would, I mean, I would like, again, I like to put myself in the shoes, I like to have that, the real-world context, because it's, it's hard to, to realize the impact and, and just feeling it, like you said, like, um, Mr. Rain said, feeling it in your chest, standing there, you know, it, it makes a difference. So I don't like to make decisions without that. So I plan on going out there sometime in the next week or two, for, for sure, at Zini.
Yeah, I think that's a very, very, very important thing.
When did they start building that apparatus up there?
About a year and a half ago.
Yeah.
I suppose they put it up pretty quick.
It was, yeah, brought in a shipping container and a smaller generator, and set it up, and then they've been adding to it, there's
Had this land recently sold?
No, they're leasing it from a land ownership.
Yeah, it was an old expired lease on a, with Fox Run
Right, Fox Oil.
From back, like, it expired fifteen years ago, and they're going around, and there are other people in the county that are helping to facilitate the same company's gas wells that are interconnected, and they're just hoping they can ramp her up, maybe, and keep on adding, depending on how much gas they get.
Oh, so they're using the natural gas to run the generator?
Very nicely, and so
And that site is where apparently there's a lot of, um, lines that, that came to that center back in the day when they were
It's the trunk line.
Yeah.
It's right there.
And so, but that's how it ended up there, and it was an old abandoned well that had a little gap next to it, like we all saw. And all of a sudden, kaboom.
I think it's a genius idea, but the problem is, they, they have to regulate the sound, they can't.
How far away from you?
At this point, time they know.
Yeah, and I, I, I talked to Mr. Rain, he called me Friday, and I had a discussion with him. Apparently, there's a, a muffler that they can buy for the, for that generator that would greatly significantly reduce the sound, and they have
Well, I live a mile and three-quarters from it, and I put two girls on the bus this morning, and I could hear it.
Yeah. I sure, I, I'm, I bet you I can hear, we can hear down in the valley, so
Yes, it's worse than that.
I would just recommend that, like, if you guys are gonna go and check it out, which I think you should, if you do, you'll know what to do, I'm sorry, but
You're fine, you're fine.
But I wouldn't discuss it on tape when you're gonna do that, because they do turn it up and down based on what they're being heard. That's just a fact.
So, my, my uncle's Jim Coon, so they live
Oh, yeah, I know Jim.
Oh, yeah.
Well, a week ago tomorrow, you could stand in my son's yard and have a conversation. Hear you, it was that loud.
And it was a half mile away, too. I can't, I don't know how Derek's doing it, but that's what they've done, they've now expanded But that's what they've done, they've now expanded it, they brought in a larger generator that is, supposedly they're running it as hard as they can, because they don't know yet whether there's enough natural gas there to handle the load.
Right.
And as soon as they know that, they're gonna quiet it down.
Yes.
Well, they've been doing it for six months at that level.
In Missouri, you know, they've been run out at several locations. There was a big lawsuit against them from Stafford, Texas now for possibly stealing equipment.
Now, the, the way the state statutes work, we can't, they would be grandfathered in on zoning.
Yep.
But, but, if you make any changes, that affects your grandfathered status.
Well, the thing of it is, if you don't care if it's there, put a muffler on it.
Yeah.
I mean, how hard would that be?
That's what I've said all along.
I mean, I'm not rich, but I could afford a muffler on it.
Right, and that's where a special use case comes in. They have to get a permit. If we, if, if it goes the way I think it's gonna go, they'd have to get to, to do that, because that would be zoned ag, they would have to get a special permit to do that, and that special permit would say, if you don't have a, I mean, we could say, if you don't keep this at a decibel level less than this, this many feet from the property line, then you're in violation and you're gonna have to pay fines. So, that's where a special use case would, would come into place. They, one, it, you would know what's going in, because they have to come apply for that special use case before. So, it's gonna daylight any of those new installations, and it could be approved or denied depending on us and depending on the county commission, but if they don't follow those rules, then, then, yeah, they'll be fined and then such. So, that's how that could work within zoning, if we, if we choose to, to insert those special use cases, which I, I highly think that we will.
Well, there's gotta be something after, it could be that.
Yeah, it's.
I mean, there's no way that I could come and do that for your house, you wouldn't stand for it, but yet, they're getting away with it.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I mean, it, it really, to me, it really shows why the county needed to be zoned, and it shows that we're doing the right thing and doing that. Being on the advisory board, we, we had a lot of feedback both ways, and, and I think that this kinda really shows that we don't know what's gonna come next. So, if we don't zone now, we don't have any protection.
All right, I guess, just catch me up on the advisory board.
The county commissioners put together a board of, I can't remember how many there was.
Eight of us.
There were eight of us, seven or eight, to go and kind of investigate and, and make a recommendation to the county whether they should form a zoning committee to, and make a recommendation of whether the county should be zoned. So, the three of us were on it. So, we kinda did our due diligence on, at a high level, looking at counties around, what they did, their, what their recommendations were, how they zoned, and then we had several.
Three.
Public meetings.
Three public meetings where the community could come out and, and voice their concerns or advocate for zoning. And so, that's kinda.
So, you three were on that committee?
We were on that committee, yeah. And we met, what, ten, ten or twelve times earlier this year?
I knew about the committee, yes, but I just wasn't a part of it.
I think all the, you could probably find the meetings on YouTube or Facebook or whatever, most of them were on that. Does anybody else have any public? Yes.
I'm Clint Walker, and what I'm gonna tell you about zoning and you know what you're doing, that's fine. But what I will say is make it fair and balanced. You figure out what agriculture is or not. I, I've seen what zoning does in this town, personally. There's a house over here that, ten, fifteen years ago, a lady got a letter in the mail and said, if you don't tear it down or don't do something, the city is gonna come do something to this house. Well, she sold the house, says somebody had some money, and guess what? So, that house is still over there, even more shady. That's one.
So, that, that's a code issue, not a zoning issue?
It, it still falls under zoning. You go out here, you don't have to give it that, that. All right, so I don't like deer hunters. That's not agricultural. And so, I wanna do, I wanna do away with that, but that's not, they come out and they buy land up, now, I'm holding it up. They buy land out there, and they don't plow anything, it's just deer. We never had deer when I was growing up, that's not the point. If it wanna regulate stuff, do it across the board. And the bottom line is, is, sure, I've had some bullet holes from that, and then there's other issues out here in the county as far as zoning, and you go, well, what are they? Well, I got my own small business, I'm grandfathered in, you know, I, I don't like this, but it's grandfathered in. Where are we gonna stop? You know, I don't like what my neighbor does. You know, I could care less. I have fifty-seven dump trucks come across my road for two weeks, and I never complained one iota. I have four-wheelers that side by side come by my house at ten or twelve o'clock at night, and I'm talking about ten, fifteen of them, with lights blazing and music. They'll go away, don't panic. I had a neighbor that got all excited because the county wanted to open up a rock quarry that already opened at one time in this county. And one guy in this county stopped it because he went and got a lawyer, and they didn't open that rock quarry up. Well, what I'm gonna tell you, that was progress as far as rock quarry. I have a neighbor that's from Kansas City, he's a deer hunter, he's a good guy, he owns good property out there. He was concerned about that rock quarry out there, and he was concerned that it would scare his deer off. And what I'm gonna tell you, BS. I was in the military, and when I was at Fort McClellan, Alabama, when deer season took over, the deer come up on post, and I had duty, I had a nice big green field, and I was talking to this captain, he was a deer hunter, and he told me, he said, oh, Sergeant Walker, you don't know nothing. He took me out there and showed me, there's like thirty, forty deer out there, he goes, if hit my beeper on the thing, they'll run. Deer's smart enough to get away. We never had turkey in Burbank County when I was growing up, what we do now, and we have turkey hunters. I really don't have a problem with hunters whatsoever, you know, as long as you do it responsibly, you don't shoot at me, I'm good. I don't care if you come in at five or three or four in the morning with your loud truck and wake me up, that's fine. That's called America, you gotta have some leeway for people on what they weave in. And I don't have a problem with people making a little money off of hunting or this so they can pay their taxes, because agriculture, you know what the average age of a farmer is right now?
Fifty.
Heard on the radio, forty-eight years. No, not forty-eight, fifty-eight years, fifty-eight years. I don't see anybody coming in and farming which costs the land. Thank you, Clint. Thank you for what you do.
Any other public comments? Anything else we need to discuss, and kinda what we're doing, we have our meeting scheduled next week?
Need to have the state statutes.
State statutes will be this, and then we'll. Yeah, it would be nice to have those printed out as we kinda make any kinda decision, so we can reference back to those. I think we'll have to reference back to those a lot, certainly. And if you could, I mean, I assume that you'll request, be the one that's requesting the, if we could get whatever he thinks is prudent for, you know, local neighboring county zoning. You know, I don't know what he has on file, I'm sure he can put a paralegal on it and have whatever we needed, but. Yeah, and we had some resources that we can get together and share from, from this. I think there's some recommendations, there's some websites that we have, but, yeah, we can get, we'll compile some information, we can get shared out next week.
I have some resources.
Awesome.
First thing we need to do is.
Some of that stuff you guys already worked on, but, and there is the, what you guys, some of the stuff that you guys did on the question, the questionnaire that you put out, that the advisory committee did, there's some state statutes regarding zoning. I think that's about it, but just some good resource material, I don't know if you got.
Do we need to make up bylaws? That's the other question. I don't know, I need to look at the state.
And there's a seventh person.
Yes, there is another one.
You wanna make sure they get copies of these. It's just, I mean, in there is the county resolution on property rights, and stuff that you guys can look at, reference, and go along your way. And I didn't make a copy of it, but if you guys want it, you can have it. There is, uh, Levent County's, one of their, their draft on their zoning rate.
So, David, do we need to adopt these bylaw, or are these already set?
Well, remember, you guys' bylaws from, from the advisory committee?
Oh, okay.
So, I just, you know, provided that in there in case you wanted a, an example for, yeah, you, as a planning commissioner, you'll have to adopt bylaws.
Okay. At least that doesn't need to be done tonight, though?
No.
Okay, all right.
Just some food for thought.
Thank you. And we probably need to amend this for our, says the county is advisory, I mean, I don't, I need to redo this.
Yeah, we'll see what it will.
Yeah, so I guess our homework would be to, like, kinda go through some of this, we'll go through the state statutes, and then next week, we can. Do you know what the core laws are for, like, discussions with members of the public, and what we can and cannot do, and how we have to?
As far as the public's concerned, you can discuss anything.
You guys are probably, you know, whatever you wanna discuss with the public, we don't need to discuss.
We just can't discuss with each other.
Everything that you guys do is gonna be brought to the board anyway, so.
Pete, the, uh.
Lawyer.
Lawyer, Bob. That's probably a question for Bob. Yeah, Bob said we can't, like, individ, like, Pete and I couldn't go grab coffee and talk about zoning. So, but I, I don't think that applies to, like, if somebody from the public wants to come up and, and, and my ear or whatever, that's, that's not an issue.
I, I, and, and that should use to be, I wasn't sure, you know, what they were talking about as far as you guys being able to, to talk outside the, so, yeah. I'd have to get verification on that.
Yes.
The way I understand it, it works for.
Hold, sorry, yeah, behind you.
I'm on the township board of Drywood Township, and if you have two, or if you have a quorum in present, then you cannot discuss business. That's the way I know it. So, that means two of us can't go talk together about anything, but.
Two if you can.
No.
Cause there's only three.
There's only three of us.
Okay, but there's, but, just like the, just like the county commissioners, when they switch to five.
Right.
Then, then they can.
They can have two, but not three.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so we can, I can email, we can clarify that. Yeah, he's gonna, he's gonna send us the, he's gonna send us the law, so we'll, we'll, we'll be sure to follow whatever recommendation we get from him on that, for, cause he's gonna send us the actual statutes.
And I, I hope they give you all those numbers for y'all.
He, he said he'd get it to us, he, he was gonna email us some information, so he may reach out to you for our contact. Yes, Mr. Wondell?
I have a question. Can't discuss this with each other on the street, how can you ever do anything done?
I agree, but that's the way it is with the county commissioners, I do know that.
That's, that's entirely different ballgame.
Yeah.
But there are, there are seven of us, so we.
Three of us could get together and.
Yeah, four would be, four would be considered a quorum.
And we'd have to call a special meeting. I mean, we can call special meetings, I mean, if, if it's, if it's, gets to the point that we're not making good progress, I mean, we might have to up to two meetings a week. I, I don't really want to, you know, we'll just have to play that by ear. I, I do know it's very important, I know that the longer we wait, the, you know, the more it affects the county residents. It's already been going on for a long time, so, at least for me speaking, I, I definitely understand that there's a case of urgency. It's also not the very best time of year, because it's, it's the holidays, and everybody's gonna have stuff, traveling and dinners and, you know, it's.
So, two of us could talk about it.
Maybe, we don't know yet.
We run into each, three of us, so.
Maybe, we'll, we'll verify that, we'll verify that. I think to, to follow up on that.
I think we'll wait till we do that.
We wanna move at a, yeah, we wanna move at a good pace, we don't wanna rush it and put something in place that's trash, and has a negative impact. That'd be the worst thing we could do, just to. So, we'll move as quickly as we can in a, in a. True, thank you. I mean, I would hope that we might have some drafts together beginning of the year, end of January, and, and my guess, just me personally, maybe February or March, we'd have something to submit, hopefully by then, but I think that, again, it's, there, there's a lot of due diligence that needs to happen on this, and it's gonna take, take a lot of work. Like I said, this was why I didn't necessarily agree, volunteer at first, but it, it's very important, so, I, I know, I know it's very important, so I relented it, and it's gonna be an investment in time, so I just, I don't want anybody to get super frustrated that it takes as long as it's gonna take, because it's important that we do it right. Agreed. Anything else? I'm due to adjourn. All in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Me and Miss. See you guys next Wednesday.
Sounds good.
Sir, Michael Jeremy Bill's here next week.
Figured you, for some reason, you were here, sitting in the same chair.
There wasn't anything we really discussed.
So, we need to write up some.